It is 9:30-ish. So, we'll call the November meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I see that the clerk has already taken the roll. I do have Supervisors Bry and Roser appearing virtually today. And I ask both of those Supervisors, if you're not speaking, to mute your microphones. That would be helpful. And then I'll try to remember that there's a little delay when we vote on issues. And at this time, I will call on Supervisor Jay Condon. Please come forward for the implication. I ask everybody to rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you feel so inclined, please join me for a brief moment of prayer. As we gather together today, we can all agree that 2020 has been a pretty rough year for everybody. We've had racial strife, the pandemic, the mail closure, and the most contentious presidential election of modern history. With the election behind us, we can choose to either become more divided or to come together. I pray today, whether we are Democrat or Republican, that we can come together to form a united front to overcome these problems and see us through to the brighter days ahead. Thank you, and amen.
Please join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Condon. This is the first thing we need to do is dispose of the minutes from the previous meeting. And I have a motion by Hamilton, second by LaFontaine. Any discussion on those minutes? Any discussion? All in favor of their approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. That sounded unanimous. I didn't ask for nays. And I'm not going to go to Supervisor Bry for that one. Excuseless today, we have none. Resignations, we have none. Under appointments or reappointments to the Wood County Wildlife Advisory Committee for a three-year term, Marie Lutterhand, I would entertain a motion to that effect. Again, Supervisor Hamilton with the motion, second by Supervisor LaFontaine. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that carries. Thank you. Do I have any public comment today? Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Doesn't look like I have anybody back there. Today, under acknowledgements and recognitions, you'll notice on the agenda, there's nothing there, but I don't know, I think it's important. Supervisor Han touched on it a little bit, you know, recently, a couple of days ago, a week ago, you had the right to vote. And we live in a constitutional republic where you have that right. But you have that right only because of those veterans who have gone out there, defended our country, and preserved our liberty. Tomorrow's Veterans Day. So at this point, I would ask, and I know I have a few veterans who are members of this Board of Supervisors or who are in the room, to please stand, to rise, and be recognized. It's extremely important. If you're a veteran, would you please rise? Thank you. And I know I may have all the citizens of Wood County that the United States of America for your service is really appreciated. Thank you very much. And I think Supervisor Valentin, are you still?
I am still, yes.
Okay. I assume so, because Laurie used to be my neighbor when I could. She should get shipped out somewhere. So I thank you for your current service as well. That brings us to the packet today. And we'll get rolling through that. Obviously, the big item of business that we dealt with this morning was the budget. Came out, we had the hearing, public hearing, passed by the Operations Committee and forwarded to the full board for approval. So, go to your packet, page seven. We have minutes of the Operations Committee of Tuesday, November 3rd on page seven and eight. We have monthly letter comments from the county clerk on nine. While I'm there, Trent, I'm going to let you unmute your microphone. There was a report on national news that Wood County had run out of ballots. And I texted Trent, and I said, "That's not bad. I can't believe they did mention our name personally." I was pretty proud that we got it on national news, but Trent, why don't you tell them that what you told me?
We did not run out of ballots.
Yeah. I don't know where they get those reports, from Wood County, no precinct, nowhere ran out of ballots. So I wanted to make that clear. I'm hoping that the public out there, if they're watching this, I don't know where those reports came from, but Wood County did not run out of ballots. Supervisor Hamilton.
Mr. Chairman, I did ask Trent, and he has not got an analogy to box.
We'll make a request. I told him, I said, "Any press is good press." He didn't think so. All right. Beginning on page 10, running through page 15 is the monthly letter comments from the Human Resources Department, pages 10 through 15. Page 16, the Treasurers Report. While I'm doing that, I would probably congratulate those people as well. Our county clerk, Trent Minor, Edard Gert, our Treasurer, and Tiffany Ringer, our Registered D2, as well as Craig Lambert, who were all reelected and returned to office. Congratulations to those individuals. Page 17 in your packet, First Resolution, dealing with the Wood County Tax Levy.
This will be Resolution 20-11-1, to establish Wood County's tax levy for 2020 collectible in 2021. Fiscal note, this resolution establishes the tax levy for the 2021 Wood County budget. The total levy is $28,165,064.
Can I have a motion by Wagner, a second by Supervisor Fire? Is there any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I neglected to do while I, at the public hearing that was held just before this meeting, was to thank the finance people for the tireless work they did on this project, and also to the department heads. When we came, when we asked for help in balancing the budget, they came forward and they performed brilliantly for us. So I want to thank them, and I want the rest of the county board of Supervisors to know that we received great cooperation from the staff in putting this budget together. Thank you.
How big you as well. You spent countless hours up there yourself. All right. Any other discussion on the resolution? Any further discussion? Supervisor Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the mill rate on that, on the county portion, please?
Supervisor Wagner.
In the third whereas, final down, general operating is 409, debt services 84, library aid is 42. It's right in the resolution on the third whereas.
Did that answer your question, Supervisor Powell?
No, I haven't, no.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right. I'd ask you to please go to the board to vote, and then I'd ask Supervisors Bry and Rosar to please vote.
Bry, yes.
Supervisor Bry, we got your vote.
Supervisor Zerflu and Hamilton will also need to voice vote because they only have their i-pads.
Supervisor Hamilton and Zerflu, your votes are...
Your votes, you got me here. Aye.
Supervisor Rosar, are you still on the line? If you are, you need to unmute.
I'm going to say she's not.
Or she's going to death by her.
All right. We just made her absent. That resolution passes. Thank you very much. Takes us to the second resolution in the packet, dealing with the county tax. County clerk.
This will be Resolution 20-11-2, the adoption of the 2021 Wood County budget. Fiscal note, this resolution adopts a 2021 Wood County budget of $110,628,248, including the appropriations, revenues, and the use of fund balances proposed by the Operations Committee as outlined in the 2021 Wood County Proposed Budget Document.
And I have a motion by Supervisor Fire, and a second by Supervisor LaFontaine. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, yeah, no. This is just minor, but in the second whereas, why isn't this from the Operations Committee as presented? I mean, the other ones had it that way, and why couldn't this one be second whereas?
Yeah, I don't know the answer, other than the chairman is the one who actually got up and made the presentation. Obviously, when it came out of committee, what was there, he made the presentation, made the presentation of work.
I use the resolutions that are before you.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I do not see the difference, but go ahead.
In the second whereas, it just says, "The chair of the Operations Committee has presented a detailed budget to the county board," as opposed to the Operations Committee. We'll note that and ask going forward Supervisor Condon. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I'd ask you to please vote, and then I would ask Supervisor Bry.
Yes. This is Donna. I am not absent. I could not unmute my phone. My last was a yes, and this one will be a yes.
Thank you Supervisor Rosar.
And I'm not absent. Please put me back to present, please.
Yeah, I can't make her present in the middle of this.
All right. Supervisor Rosar, we'll make it present after this vote, okay?
Okay, thank you, though.
And Supervisor Zerflu?
Aye.
Supervisor Zerflu, both sides, the resolution passes unanimously. While she is on there and unmuted, as we go there, I should have also, Supervisor Rosar is down in Madison for freshman orientation, and I certainly want to congratulate her on her election to the State Assembly. She had a real valid excuse for being out on the road today. So, Donna, we wish you well, Donna Madison as well. Thank you. All right. Third resolution from the Operations Committee. Page 19 in your packet. Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Okay. This will be Resolution 20-11-3, authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, paid amount of $2,510.
And I have a motion by Hamilton, a second by Zerflu. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Supervisor Bry?
Yes.
Supervisor Rosar?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
That was a yes by Supervisor Rosar. And again, that resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. The fourth resolution in the packet here comes from both the Health and Human Services Committee, as well as the Operations Committee, and I'd ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-11-4, to amend the 2020 Public Health Budget for additional revenue and expenditures unanticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $913,459.
And I have a motion by Supervisor Fire, a second by Supervisor Hamilton. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? I see none. I would ask you to please vote. Supervisor Bry?
Yes.
Supervisor Rosar?
Yes.
Thank you. And that resolution passes unanimously as well. Thank you. Going back to the packet, page 21 and 22, the Human Services Committee of October 22nd. That's 21 to 22. I'm sorry, Supervisor Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to point out the handout on the budget, the budget and brief that was handed out by the Finance Department. The time I've had to look at it is probably the most helpful document I've had on the budget. I'd like to compliment the Finance Department for putting this out. It's a good, I think it's a good layman's review of a budget rather than looking at the total budget. You could certainly look at both, but I'd recommend to the public, if you could look at this line, it would be helpful to look at how the budget's put together, has narrative on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Yeah, it was a monumental step forward in being able to understand that it was typically a multi thousand-page document. Supervisor Wagner?
Yeah, and it is on the county's website, too. So we can, we need to get it out to, we need to get the information that is available to the public to see it, too. So, thank you, guys.
Finance Director Terber.
I'd like to note that we will be modifying...
Al, you have a microphone? So we can catch that, thanks.
I just want to note that we will be modifying that into a final version, and I will send everyone an email to notify them when that is posted. And I'll also send you a PDF of the short brief, so you can use that with your constituents wherever you want. So, I'm just saying, if anybody wants to destroy this version, or wait for a final one, or clean up grammatical errors, take off the proposals, language, and things like that. So there'll be a second version coming that's almost the same, which you can use as a final. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Back to the packet. And thank you for the comments, Supervisor Curry. You're right. Years ago, I asked the Finance Director to buy a colored printer because we had 20 shades of gray on charts that we used. You couldn't ascertain what was what. Now we actually have it in a much more understandable format yet, but it's greatly appreciated. Page 23 in your packet begins the monthly report from the Health Department, runs through page 27. Supervisor Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm going to say probably a lot of people aren't compliant, but we are on the Health Committee. And the Judicial Legislative Committee had a meeting, and I know that we had several people who were not wearing masks. And one of them was ordered to go out, and security had to be called. And when security was called, security came back and told me that this person can remain in the room without a mask because this person has a medical problem wearing a mask. I heard a lot of comments afterwards. There was 15 people in that room. It has changed. I think that's too many people in that room. Five of them refused to wear a mask, but then did put it on, took it off, and things like that. I really want to know, we're at the Health Department, and I have called the Health Department on this. I just really want to know, do we have a mask policy here, or don't we? And I know I can't say, you've got a medical reason, what is it? Because that's violating the HIPAA regulations. I want to know what it is, because we're on such an increase. The election is over, and we're still on an increase in the number of people with this in Lynn County. I want to know if this is true or not, and who's in charge. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to ask Corporal Counselor Cassel, he did send a memo out on this the other day as to how committee meetings can be handled and supervisors can be regulated in those meetings, that there is a policy within the county. I already did see the governor's order, and gatherings has been overturned, overruled. The masking ordinance, I believe, remains in effect. Peter, do you want to comment on the legality of that? Or the enforcement mechanism? I know the enforcement mechanism for committee members, and the committee can decide not to enforce it. Peter?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not sure if you want me to actually put it out in there. So it seems to me the question really boils down to whether or not a committee chair and the committee itself have the ability to ask someone to leave the meeting, ask them, force them to, with our law enforcement folks present, to leave the meeting if in fact they're not wearing a mask. And I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I believe, I believe you can, as long as you give them a different means of participating in the meeting that's no less. So if you've got it available where they can participate virtually, you can say, "Okay, we understand you've got a medical issue. We're now to inquire about that medical issue. We want, though, to only have folks with social distancing and masks present, and so we want you to participate by means of this virtual attendance in this other conference." And we apply, I believe the county could do that, and I think a committee could do that. I'm not sure the Health Director, who's really kind of calls the shots pursuant to state law in Wood County, as regards to that, has gotten to that step, but I think that will be an appropriate way to resolve the matter. I'm not sure if that's more than what you're asking for, or less than what you're asking for.
I, yeah, I don't know either, but I do know this. I think the point that Supervisor Clendeney is telling me, we're trying to minimize exposure. And I'll use the example, when I'm walking around the quarter, so I left this bench this morning, I put a mask on. When I'm sitting up here, it's kind of hard to understand me as much as I do if I put it on, and I am pretty socially distanced from everybody. But the gist of this is, you know, we're trying to stem the tide. We're trying to get through this, and, you know, if you'd observe the protocol that has been rolled out by the Health Department, it would be greatly appreciated. To Supervisor Clendeney's point, you know, so I understand, and I know you make your claim of medical exemption, and you're right, you can't ask, but to hope that everybody, you know, uses the best judgment possible to help everybody out in that regard. So, Bill, I'll try to clarify, or Supervisor Clendeney, I'll try to clarify with the Health Department as to where they're headed with this and where they're going.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hamilton, do you have your hand up, or are you just sitting over there?
Yes.
All right. Health Department's monthly letter comments, 23 through 27. Any other questions there? The Human Services Department report, dealing with Director Bruins on 28, and that runs through page 36, 28 through 36. The Veteran Service Officers Report on 37 and 38. The SEED Committee Minutes of October 20th on 39 and 40. The UW Extension Report to the SEED Committee for October on page 41, 2, 3, and 4, 41 through Report from the Land and Water Conservation Department, pages 45 through 50. Fourth from the Planning and Zoning Office, beginning on 51 with Director Lindberghs, through 55, 51 through 55. The Citizens Groundwater, the Wood County Citizens Groundwater Group meeting of Monday, October 19th, on 56 and 57. In 58, there's a brief synopsis of the Wisconsin Fund Grant Program trends. And then the Economic Development and PPE meetings that are held somewhat internally, beginning on 59 and running through 66, pages 59 through 66. So we're passively in conversation as to how we deal with the current pandemic and some of the other economic recovery issues that we face, especially down here, this happens right now. Reading to page 67 in your packet, and it's actually on 67 and 68, that's the resolution coming forth from the SEED, the Property Information Technology, and the Operations Committee. I'd ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-11-5, to authorize a planning and zoning director to make application for broadband grants in partnership with Hilbert Communications LLC, and to contract with Hilbert for assisting in the grant application process. Fiscal note, the county is not making an actual financial commitment by means of this resolution, but is expressing an intention to pursue broadband internet expansion in the county if funding from the state in support thereof is received.
And I have a motion by Supervisor Hamilton, a second by Supervisor Valentin. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? I would ask you to please vote, and I'd ask Supervisor Bry, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Rosar?
She's having problems in here.
They need to get better broadband on Capitol.
Yes.
Supervisor Rosar votes a affirmative. That resolution passes unanimously. There's some background on this, pages 69 through 72, but we've had tremendous cooperation of all committees. You know, you've heard about this for years. This got started a while back, but we are really moving forward on this as quickly as possible. And it's certainly come to the forefront, as we've had to deal with virtual attendance at not only county board meetings, but school, for instance. I see that Port Edwards is now in a virtual attendance policy. I think they began Monday, probably.
At least their middle school, I was just going with this one.
Yeah, so, you know, the more capability we have, the more bandwidth, the better. So 69 through 72, there's additional information there. The Criminal Justice Ad-Hoc Coordinator Committee Meeting of Monday, October 26th, on 73. Report from the Child Support Agency on 74, Director Bruins. That brings us to page 75 and 76, two pages of resolutions from the Judicial and Legislative Committee.
This will be Resolution 20-11-6, to support an increase in child support funding from the state of Wisconsin to county child support agencies. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County.
And I have a motion by Supervisor Hamilton, a second by Supervisor Fisher. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? I'd ask you to please vote, and I'd ask Supervisor Bry?
Yes.
And Supervisor Rosar?
Yes.
Both of those voted in affirmative. Supervisor Powell, your vote is not registered yet.
Yeah, I'm going aye. I can't get it to come up on here.
Do you have the ability to override that, Trent, or?
I want Lisa to look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa, and thank you Supervisor Powell. Again, this resolution passes unanimously. Going back to the packet, page 77, begins the minutes of the Property Information Technology Committee, begins on 77, runs through 79, pages 77 to 79. Some company background, who we've been dealing with on this wireless project, page 80 through 87, some background information, people from the public ask you from about just a wireless. Page 89 in your packet, 2020 Wood County Renewable Sustainable Grant, Fisher, that's 89 through 93, 89 through 93. On page 94, beginning on 94 and running through 98, is the monthly report, it's from Information Technology. Keep in mind, they have a hand in basically everything we do everywhere in the county. So if you're a committee member and/or your department head, and you're out there looking at purchasing software or doing anything else that involves computers, make sure you check with the IT department first. Make sure that everything syncs up. So 94 to 98. Page 99, monthly letter comments from our facilities manager, Ruben Antiaso. Page 100, minutes of the McHulon Memorial Library, that's 100 and 101. The Central Library System Board Trustees Minutes from 924, 102 through 104. Wood County Library Board Minutes on 105 and 106. Supervisor Clendeney.
And now, Wood County Library, could you list me on the bottom as being a member of that committee?
I am not a member of that committee.
We'll make sure we get that amended, then. Strike Supervisor Clendeney.
Again. You'd have way too many volunteers.
All right. That brings us to the final page in the packet, and this is relating to the life and public service of John Dove. I just make a really, well, Trent, why don't you go ahead and read the resolution?
This will be Resolution 20-11-7, relating to the life and public service of John Dove Jr.
Okay. Supervisor Dove was on this board for about 24 years, and we've recently lost a couple of Supervisors who played a really large role in what happened on this board floor over the years. We just had the passing of Gordy Stargardt and John Dove, and both of those people were mentors to me, and to see them, you know, having recently passed is, it's one of those things where you start to realize that you have a very short time upon the stage of action to get anything done in your life that really affects your community. And these people, both of them, just dedicated a large part of their lives to making Wood County a better community, better county to live in. So I want to relate that. John Dove was somebody who used to come in my office, we would talk for hours on end about county policy. Supervisor Clendeney, after a meeting, might tell you a really great story about his first encounter with Supervisor Dove, which he shared with many of you. But I just wanted to the family, to the friends, and everybody know that John Dove was instrumental in all of this board, he had for many, many years. So with that, I have a motion to approve by LaFontaine. I have a second to that motion by Supervisor Hamilton. I would ask that, I would go to a voice vote here. All in favor?
Aye.
We have unanimous vote there, and then I would ask that you rise in honor of silence and respect for the love of Supervisor Kerry. And I thank you. All right. That brings us to the end of the packet today. There's a number of things going on. The counties are moving along pretty quickly. The Counties Association is enjoying this loss with the opioid crisis. I have a... I had a conversation actually with the Attorney General of the state of Wisconsin, as well as some of the people of the Counties Association. We're moving along pretty rapidly. I think we'll see a settlement there that will benefit the county. That's good news as we go forward. There's quite a bit of time between this meeting, because it's held a week early, and the December meeting, so I assume the December meeting packet will be fairly large as we get to that. And then, as hunting season rolls around, I want to urge the public to, A, comply with the laws, assist our wardens in our sheriff's department, and I want to urge everybody in the public to just be careful out there. Once that bullet leaves the barrel of your gun, you can't call it back, so be careful where you shoot. We don't want to deal with any of those in our sheriff's department. Supervisor Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to let the people know that the Wisconsin Towns Association, a county unit, will be meeting on the 14th, on the 15th of January, and it will be a virtual meeting sponsored by the Towns Association. The Town of Rock will be sponsoring that, and if you want to eat at the Towns Association, it will begin at 6:30, and we're requiring people that are going to attend the meeting in person to notify. We'll send that all out to the clerk. Thank you. Just want people to know that we still exist.
Supervisor Hamilton.
So they're having both. You can either go to it, to the Town of Rock, or you can go on virtual.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was.
And our Towns Association, we're lucky, we're county's most active, most active county association in the state of Texas, so we appreciate that. Is there anything else that needs to come before this board? Supervisor Hamilton?
I'll adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion, I don't need it, but you know that Supervisor Hamilton did? We will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.